Good evening. Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the February 6, 2023, meeting of the Stillwater City Council. At this time, I will call the meeting to order, and tonight, we have some special guests with us from Scout Troop 802, and they are here to help lead the pledge of allegiance for us. So Scouts, if you'd come up and lead the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we do a picture with the Scouts? and some exciting developments going on here in Stillwater. We've talked about this a little bit previously, but after serving Stillwater's black community for generations, Booker T. Washington School had passed into private ownership and sat vacant for many years. Now, thanks to the generosity of an anonymous donor here in our community, the city of Stillwater has been able to purchase that historic structure on 12th Avenue, and we plan to return it to public use. We can all breathe a sigh of relief that Washington School is no longer in danger of being demolished or used for redevelopment. Although it's fitting to talk during Black History Month about the value of preserving this segregation-era separate school that was so important to our black community here in Stillwater, I think we should also remember that black history is everyone's history. It's an important part of our entire community's history every month of the year, and this story and the history of Washington School is an important part of Stillwater's history for all of us. The Washington School project is a way to honor that history and the people who lived it while uniting our community behind this exciting effort that we hope will increase the understanding, build bridges, and culturally enrich all of Stillwater. So we have a video that's been put together by city staff about the project, and I think we're going to run that now.
People get very emotional talking about this building, and it really was striking when I started having conversations with different members of the community. It was consistently described to me as the beating heart of the black community in Stillwater, and it held that role for such a long time. That was the place not only where you went to school, but the place where you went after school, and the place where community meetings happened, and the place where sort of all these hopes and dreams and optimism for what could be came together.
It's the center of the community, center of the village, you know, it used to call it the village, and then I learned it's the village, you know, so, but it's the center of everything.
It serves us to be strong, to be dependent on ourselves, to learn that we can be taught. It's always been instilled into us that, you know, people of color were unable to be taught. We were able to be taught. We were able to succeed where we wanted to be or where we wanted to go. It wasn't about separation, it was about learning from our peers. So Mr. Johnson was, you know, my favorite teacher. She's an OG. She taught my mother, she taught, oh, she taught maybe four or five generations. She was a sweet, loving, down-to-earth, really. You couldn't cheat on a test. They had the best. I mean, their band was good, their football team was good. They even had clubs, I didn't even know anything about. They had Board Scouts, they had Girl Scouts, but they had a lot of organizations within the school system.
Occasionally, people would tell me that it had been the black school at one point in time. Of course, it also had other histories, right? It was a shelter, it functioned as some different things, and a lot of people just didn't know or knew parts of the story, and that's really normal. History changes over time in the ways that we remember it. It's just not possible to honor a history we're not aware of.
There are some unique characteristics of the building. Unfortunately, it was built in a floodplain, and the building has routinely flooded throughout its history. There were developers that looked at it at one point and thought about tearing it down. That brought forth quite a bit of contention from the community because it is a part of our history. Based on the fact that it's been occupied for a whole lot of years, based on the fact that it's flooded repeatedly, it is in remarkable shape from a structural standpoint, and the original part of the building will be beautiful when we get it restored.
I think Washington School's part of this community's history. It's part of the city's sort of legacy and part of our, I think, part of our responsibility in terms of maintaining community places.
Plans, structure, our dream team, or either our special committee, needs to be put in place in order to say, where we go from here? We got a platform, we need wheels on it, we need an engine on it, and we need to get the ball rolling. And we find the resources, find the people that have an interest in it, and we put it together, and we try to strive, you know, to engineer what can be done, you know, to really save it or to make it become a reality.
Thank you to our team here at the city who was able to put that together. That's, I think, a good introduction to the issue and to the project. You know, there are a number of folks who were part of the video that are here. Reverend Calvin Miller, Ms. Iris Slate is here, Dr. Arada is here. We appreciate your participation in that, and certainly the work that you all have done to get us to this point in terms of preservation and doing, bringing this building back into our community's life. I also wanted to read a letter that Mr. McNichol sent. Karen Washington is also here. Karen has been a driving force in the preservation effort for Washington School. And so Mr. McNichol sent a letter to her earlier this last month, I think, about sort of the city's intentions around the school. So I figured we would read that as well, just to let everyone know kind of what we're, what our plan is. So as Mr. McNichol wrote, "I'm pleased that the school is under the ownership of the city of Stillwater, and that we can work together to restore the school similar to the original construction that existed in 1938. The Washington School Reunion Association and input from other community members will be important to make decisions regarding the future of the building and its use. In addition, the association will be important as we seek to raise funds to restore the school. The generous donor who facilitated acquisition of the school requested that the building be used for historical displays, education classes, community events, and recreation, and it's the city's intent for those same uses, although the association may determine there are also other appropriate uses for the school. The city also recommends that we form a representative board to operate the school. This group would be responsible for determining operational rules and appropriate uses. In exchange for operation of the facility, the city of Stillwater would provide insurance for the building and provide utilities without costs or rent." We've had the building examined. It's in remarkably good structural condition, as Mr. McNichol noted in the video, with the exception of the two wings which were added in the mid-'40s. It's likely that those will need to be removed, and that there's considerable debris both inside and outside the buildings, which will be cleared to allow people to safely enter the interior. It's the city's intent to work with others to organize a volunteer day to remove the debris, and our target for work is in April when warmer weather is predominant. Following that work, access could be allowed for those interested in the facility. Finally, following the work described above, it would be our intent to work with the association to organize a series of comprehensive meetings to determine a bright future for Washington School. So appreciate Mr. McNichol's communication on that front, and really, I think, very excited, I know for myself, I assume the council as well, really excited that we're able to take this step and start us back on a path to having Washington School be a functioning and important integral space and facility for our entire community to use, and that is very exciting. So thank you to all that have taken part so far and for all the work that has been done to this point. There is still plenty of work to be done, lots of it, and I think we wanted to make sure that we express the city's commitment to that work, the city's commitment to doing what we can and what we must do to bring Washington School back into our community as a functioning facility for our community's use. So thank you for everyone, to everyone for this, where we are at this point, and look forward to working with you all in the future. All right. That takes us to the next item on the agenda. Item four is the consent docket. Counselors, questions, comments, or action on the consent item?
Motion to accept consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the consent docket. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the consent docket is approved. Item seven, public hearings. 7A is receive public comment regarding a request for a specific use permit to allow a medical marijuana grow facility at 1198 East Airport Road, CC-23-18. Did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, we did.
Ms. Porter.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Jaclyn Porter, presenting on behalf of the Planning Department. The current item before you is a specific use permit for a growing facility located at 1198 East Airport Road. Here's an area map of the subject property. It's at the, it's near the intersection of Airport Road and Marion. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. There's not a lot around it. It's out there. Here's current zoning. It is zoned general industrial. There is currently a growing facility here. There is a change of ownership request, which has required them to come back to you for a specific use permit. Here's a Google Street View of the subject property looking north off of Airport Road. Here's an image of the 2030 Conference of Plans. Future land use maps are used to project the desired uses in the community at the time of the adoption of the Conference of Plan, and the subject property at the time, it was projected to be industrial. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Counsel? Seeing no questions, this time I'll open the public hearing. I don't have anyone sign up to speak at the public hearing, so I will close the public hearing. Jaclyn, was there a recommendation from the Planning Commission?
Yes, there was. Planning Commission recommends approval with a four to zero vote.
Thank you, Jaclyn. Counselors?
Motion to accept Planning Commission's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the recommendation. Please vote. That item is approved with a vote of four to zero. Next up is item 7B, receive public comment regarding a request for a specific use permit to allow a medical marijuana dispensary at 1023 East 6th Avenue, CC-23-19. Did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, we did.
Ms. Porter.
As stated, this is for a medical marijuana dispensary located at 1023 East 6th Avenue. Here's an area map of the subject property. It is located near Berdick, and Perkins is there to the west and south of 6th. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. Autozone is located to the south of the property, but you can't really see it, but it's in the hash marks with it. And then to the east is Easy Mini Storage, and further east, for a better location, that is the Fair Lawn Cemetery here in Stillwater. Here's a zoning map of the subject property. It is zone general commercial. Here's a street view looking south off of East 6th Avenue. It is currently a medical marijuana dispensary. It is again another one where it's a new owner, has to get a new specific use permit. Here's a future land use map of the subject property, projecting it to be a commercial desired use. Are there any questions for staff?
Counsel?
The map shows a very large parcel of land. We're talking about just the building that's this address, correct?
Correct, and it's the whole parcel, but it's going to be the address of this, the old gas station is where they're doing the dispensary at.
Anything further? This time, I'll open the public hearing. I don't have anyone sign up to speak on this item either, so I will close the public hearing. And Jaclyn, is there a Planning Commission recommendation?
Yes, there is. Planning Commission recommends approval with a vote of four to zero.
Thank you, Jaclyn. Before I ask for a motion on this item, I just thought it'd be nice if we reminded folks that we don't have a whole lot of discussion on these items generally, because the way the medical marijuana laws are passed in this state, we don't really have a whole lot of discretion on these items, which I think is unfortunate, not for any particular reason related to medical marijuana, other than you would think that as a city council, we would have as much ability to regulate these types of businesses as we do others. This is not the case under the way the medical marijuana referendum was passed. So that's why we end up doing this. In fact, if we don't approve these, generally, we would be subject to lawsuits, and it's unfortunate, but it is the case. So just a reminder for those of you out there who wonder why these things generally pass without. We had a counselor here a while ago who always voted no out of a personal belief, but they passed nonetheless. So anyway, just a reminder. Counselors, any action on this item?
I move to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 7B. Please vote. And with a vote of four to zero, that item is approved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jaclyn. Next up, item 8A is our annual report from the Western Payne County Ambulance Trust Authority from Mr. Jerry Muller.
I am Jerry Muller, 1614 South Boulder Creek Drive, but also the chairman of the board of the Payne County Ambulance Trust Authority. So I last presented, not quite annually, but 10-19-2020, a good COVID year, so I had a good reason to stay away, I think. We have, it's timely in some ways, we have at least 10 to 12 years of data we can show you historically. Now, am I supposed to open this?
Yes, sir. Don's going to open.
I see it. You know, you're asking a lot for this retired guy. I'm just telling you. All right. So, okay, I'm there.
Done.
Now, can I just move it with the arrow?
Enter mode, and then you just press the arrow when you're ready.
All right. The, okay, this is our board, and formed by five different entities. I'm appointed by Stillwater Medical Center. Crystal Althan is Oklahoma State. Your representative is Elaine Ackerson. Harlan Wells is from the Payne County, and then Coe Graves is currently appointed by the city of Perkins. Those are three-year terms that alternate between Perkins and Glencoe. The, so our job is to contract with someone to provide emergency medical services for the western part of Payne County. We have contracted with LifeNet based in Texarkana. They're a nonprofit entity that also provides ambulance services in Hot Springs, Texarkana, of course Stillwater, and then two other smaller, maybe three other in Arkansas. So they've been our sole provider. We went through an extensive review. In fact, I reported it in 2020. A consultant came in and reviewed our performance criteria, and they were quite pleased with what LifeNet had done. This is our service area. I will tell you, we should have had, if you see the little, to the east, you see a line goes through Quay, goes through Player, I think that's actually the eastern part of Payne County. The orange is our Western Payne County service area. The blue is in Noble County. When we took over the service from Stillwater Fire Department, that was included in the service area, so we continued that, and not a bad thing, because now we're getting paid to do that. So the, so this is the volume. I didn't go to 11, but I went to 2012, and you can see a steady increase except for 2020, and almost double. This is a 911 volume, this is emergency calls, and pretty impressive growth. I don't think the population has increased that much, but the call volume for emergency services has. I don't know if I can explain that. The, these are transfers. These are hospital to hospital. These are hospital to nursing home, requires a truck in order to do that. As our hospitals gotten busier, the volume of transfers has gotten busier as well, so sometimes they'll transfer, sometimes our, sometimes Perry's cat scanner's out, and we gotta move them back and forth, but anyway. So, and then I'm surprised, and if you combine the volume, again, it has almost doubled from 4883 to 8284, so. Okay, this might be a little hard to see. This is our financials, income statement from the year 2011. Unfortunately, you don't see that, but that first column is 2011, the last column on the right, not the last, not the total, but the second to last is 2022. And a kind of an important chart, but it shows our fluctuation in operating costs and revenues, and early on, when the costs were not as high for supplies and personnel, and when insurance companies actually paid more for a transport, we actually made some money. We do that, we subsidize a certain amount. If, according to our contract, if that exceeds 6% of their operating costs, then we get it back, and so they can only make a 6% margin. So you can see the, in 2014, had surplus to 230,000, then 84,000. The last four years have been deficits, and I expect that probably to continue. We have had some growth in subscription volume, but it still saves the same $5. And so we give a cost of limited increases to our endless providers, so sooner or later we will be in a deficit. Now, the good news, if you look second to the last column, you see there's a loss of 41,000, and that reduced our cash on hand to 439,000. Well, I mean, it's gone from a high of 650 to 4, but if we can maintain $40,000 loss, we'd be, we could considerably last 10 years. I don't think that's going to happen, but sooner or later, it will probably catch up with us, but it won't be for the next couple of years. If that happens, I'll come back to the city and ask if we increase our subscription cost, since you all provide the bulk of the money, and I'll show you that in just a second. The, okay, any questions on that?
Jerry, did you? Sorry, could you just briefly talk about the subscription costs and how that gets collected?
Yeah, someone comes to the city utilities, and they're told that unless they object, and they'll add, we'll add $5 to their electric bill or water bill, or whatever utility bill they have. And then they're given opportunity, they sign that they heard that, and then they don't want it, then they're given a form and said, you fill this out, send it in, we'll take it off. So, and that's how we get it, and that's how we get it. Perkins, Glencoe, Stillwater. We also get it from the Noble County and CREC, or actually CEC, Central Electric. I'm going to show you that on the next slide, unless you have another question.
Go ahead. Okay. Well, actually, I do have another question. So what is, in terms of billing users of the service, a subscriber versus a non-subscriber, what does that look like? What does somebody pay to use the ambulance if they're a subscriber versus a non-subscriber?
Well, you get, if you don't, we give a 40% discount if you are a subscriber, and so if some of these people say, well, I'm, you know, I've got insurance, or I got Medicare, problem is not all of those are, meet medical criteria. In other words, you take someone from your home to the hospital or to a nursing home, it doesn't guarantee that it's going to be paid, because there has to be a medical need. If you're doing it as a taxi service, they're going to deny it, so that would be the difference, 40%.
So if my mother-in-law, who lives out of town, falls and needs an ambulance, is she covered by my subscription, or is she not covered because she doesn't live in my house?
She is not covered. She has to live in your house.
Okay.
Yep, everybody in the house is covered.
Thank you.
Okay. The, so, I'll look at the top. Central Electric started in 2014, making this service available, deducting subscriptions for the trust authority and for the membership program. The, as you can see, during those 11 years, they've added 1,600,000. So the city Perkins, they have been doing this since day one. Point you to Noble County. The, in 2013, after two elections, they passed both the sales tax and a bit of ad monorum to fund their emergency medical services, which at the time, which it still is in the Noble County or the Perkins Fire Department. When they did that, well, then they took those two areas that we cover and gave us a pro-rata amount. So now, over those 11 years, we've gotten 788,000 for them for covering that area. The, but the big dog, if you go up, is city of Stillwater, always has been. And although a couple of these started later, so at least 75%, maybe not 77, 75% of all the dollars come from city of Stillwater. And so I want to recognize Dana Maddox, Director of Utilities and I think Membership, Billing Services for the help since day one, and we couldn't have done it without her and her staff. She's really good, and in fact, the Oklahoma Municipal Alliance named her the Drake Rice Customer Service Award winner for 2021. So she won't like that I mention that, but anyway, I found it on the internet, and I said, I gotta mention that. So, yes, they do, they do a great job. Okay, I didn't put this in your packet because it's luminous, and, but, anybody who wants this, I will send it to you with the name of a contact person to answer your questions. But this is an operations report we get every month from LifeNet. Includes response times for urban and rural. It includes all the late responses that we had, and a written description of what happened, and how we can keep it from happening again. Sometimes it's a wrong address, given sometimes they put the wrong address in the GPS, sometimes we've got all five trucks running. So I will tell you that when we started, and you look at that volume, we started with two and a half trucks, and now we have five, and so we actually have more trucks than we actually need. However, it's just as easy to staff five as it is four and a half, easier actually, and the longer we can afford it, we get better response time, so we continue to do that. we get better response time. So, we continue to do that. This also talks about the community activities they're involved in. We do lots of CPR training that LifeNet does. They do all the seniors at Stillwater High School, and actually, all the seniors in the surrounding schools. Because they're required to have that to graduate, if I'm not mistaken. The, also, they tell us what meetings they've had. Game day's a big deal. So, they're, they've got a lot of, a lot of meetings with the city and O S U about game day preparations for the O S U games. The, another report that you don't have is, is our quality care review. And, and this patient care reports, we break it down by cardiac metabolic neurosurgical non-traumatic pain respiratory. We have protocols for all those. Our E M Ts, when they respond to one, they expect to follow a protocol for that particular diagnosis. The, and the, for example, cardiac chest pain is one. They look to see if aspirin was administered, if not, why? Or was there an allergy? Was a twelve lead acquired within ten minutes, twelve lead EKG? Was the patient transported within twenty minutes of patient contact? Did we provide oxygen? If not, why was it withheld? So, all these protocols, and, and, and we do really well with, with the clinical part of our, of our provision of service. So, again, if you would like to have one of these reports, I can send it to you electronically. You can look at it, send you a contact. Just if you'll just let me know, send me a text, I'll be happy to do that. So, I did that. Okay. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Counselors, any questions? I think it's, so, this has been in existence for twelve years now. This is the thirteenth year.
Yes.
I think other healthcare costs over the last twelve years have increased somewhat. And to the extent that the cost of providing the EMS service to western Payne County hasn't increased a nickel in that timeframe, it's pretty impressive. So, certainly appreciate your work and, and the authorities' work in making sure this service is available to our residents.
Thank you. Across the state, this is considered an incredible success to be able to fund this subscription program and have the quality that we have. So, Norm is there with me. So.
Yep.
And day one as well. So, with Patty. Okay.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here.
Thanks, Jerry.
All right. Item eight B, consider authorizing the general manager to sign the State of Oklahoma Department of Transportation project agreement for an approving budget amendment appropriating two million dollars for right-of-way and easements not associated with water and sewer utilities. Candy Staring is here to let us know more about this.
Good evening. I'm Candy Staring here, representing the Engineering Department. I'm gonna talk to you all this evening about the Sixth Avenue widening and realignment project. It's probably been in plans for several years. You all may remember in two thousand twenty-one, Stillwater hired Confluence to do a corridor study. And the results of that, at least those recommendations that were related to the actual widening and realignment were sent to ODOT. And they tell us that they've considered those and incorporated what they were able to incorporate. And many of them are more about wayfinding and branding and things that are not necessarily ODOT's purview. So, at this point, ODOT is at sixty percent design, and they've sent us the project agreement, that there's a resolution on the agenda a little bit later for that. But for this part, I'm just gonna tell you about the agreement and what it includes. It defines the responsibilities between us and them. And our responsibilities are the relocations of all utilities that are in their way, and acquiring land for their widening road, and then for wherever we have to move our water and sewer lines as well. And then to resolve any encroachments that remain after we've made those purchases for the wider aisle, then to get anything out of the way that's in the way. ODOT's responsibilities are everything else, pretty much, engineering plans and specs, hiring the contractor, the bidding and the construction. They gave us an estimate for the construction of twenty-five million dollars. That's just construction only. That's not the design fees and the easements that we'll have to acquire in the right-of-way. That's only So, the strategic priority related to this is connected spaces. There's probably many of them, but this is connected spaces is the ones I picked for this evening. And to give you a little bit of insight on what we believe the schedule to be, based on their email probably from a month ago, they think they'll be ready with final plans and specs in two thousand twenty-four, and they will advertise the project in F Y two thousand twenty-seven. Their fiscal year matches ours. So, anytime between July first and June thirtieth. And David Barth on our staff also reached out to them, and they think they'll be probably last half of two thousand twenty-six will be actually advertising and starting So, the budget estimate is kind of a, I wouldn't say it's a dart in the dark, but it, it was based on what we spent on Perkins and kind of extrapolated to get a two million dollar estimate for the right-of-way and easements on the Sixth Avenue work. We, if we need more, we'll be coming back. And this does not include, this two million does not include anything we're doing underwater and sewer, which we've already contracted for the west half, for the design, for moving the utilities on the west half. And then David will be back, will be here for S U A this afternoon to contract for the east half of the design part to do the water and sewer relocations. So, yeah, this budget's very rough. I also want to point out here that there will be, we know there'll be a lot of people asking questions about what this is, how this is gonna affect them, on the businesses between western and the mill, is about the area. And we anticipate, once we have those easements and the right-of-way widths, we'll start setting up public meetings where we invite them to listen to our process and what they'll be hearing from us, and kind of a schedule for acquiring all these. But we don't know enough yet about that to begin the public side of it. That's all I have. Any questions?
Go ahead. Well, I was gonna say, I mean, we've been talking about this for a long time already. My understanding is that we feel fairly comfortable with what we, what we have right, in right-of-way? That we weren't gonna have to necessarily go acquire a ton more right-of-way for this project? Is that maybe just me remembering fondly?
So, I hope so. But they have given me an estimate that they believe we'll have a hundred and thirteen parcels to acquire, and the right-of-way costs are two million just for the purchase. And then there's all these other costs. But without seeing the actual, I've heard the same thing, but I have not opened these up at sixty percent. And they, when I asked her in the last ten days about this for this presentation, they're not ready to say they're there yet. I think they're waiting on this agreement so they can set the meeting up with us, the staff and them for sixty percent. But I've heard that. And their estimate that they show for our water and sewer line is quite a bit smaller than what we anticipate. And if they're not giving us space in these predictions of how much space they need for us to move our water and sewer out of the way, then we'll be spending more to move it, maybe even off block, like maybe Seventh and Fifth, or something like that, and doing services different. So, we just don't have a clear picture of that yet. But that could be why it's smaller, because we're, you know, expected to move farther away.
Yeah. So, what is the timeline for having enough information to sort of know what, you know, get a better idea of what those costs are gonna be?
So, with our design, on the design side of it, I would expect in a year, we'll have plumber who's doing the east half, we'll have a good look at ODOT's by then. And we've gone through our alternatives to say, which ones can we leave in the right-of-way, which ones do we need to move out. So, a year for the utility side for water sewer. Electric, probably the same, because they're probably waiting also on the sixty percent plans from ODOT to know exactly what to do. And then the costs on the, the right-of-way side itself, probably six months.
You indicated a potential letting date of late two thousand twenty-six is when they would put this contract, contract out?
Advertise it, mhm.
And how long is it after that, that construction would start?
Oh, so, I think Perkins was a two-year, like they did the first part of it on the lanes in one year, and then they switched over. And now they're doing the second half of it, being the westbound on the, and that was, and they're trying to be done before football. So, that's one mile, and this is two. But I would think two years is probably, two to three is a good estimate.
Yeah. So, okay. That was my next question. But the question before that was just when they let the contract? How long is it from that point to when they actually start construction?
Oh, so usually their competitive bidding law makes them, has them advertise twenty to twenty-eight days. And then it takes probably a month to six weeks to execute a contract, and maybe a month to six weeks for submittal process. So, probably three to four months. They might, you might see some mobilization and contractors showing up, doing survey staking and things like that.
So, mid-two thousand twenty-seven?
Yes. If they bid, if they happen to start July or August, you could see people showing up before the end of two thousand twenty-six.
Okay.
It just depends on when they decide. And this, this project has shifted schedules a lot. So, everything I'm seeing right now is subject to whatever ODOT says.
But I guess, not probably before the beginning of two thousand twenty-seven. That's as the earliest we would probably see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's right, yes.
Okay. Other questions?
So, even though we don't know exactly what our right-of-way commitments might be, it's important for us to start appropriating these dollars now because...
So, we save them, and they don't get used for something else. We can, we can mark them as necessary and kind of reserve them in a typical, in type of a forecast. But this ensures they are not looked at as available for anything else.
Does ODOT require them for anything? No?
No. But just to give you an idea, the houses that we've purchased on the northeast corner of Sixth and Western, we knew that they were going to put in a dedicated turn lane there. We knew that we were gonna have to have those five properties. It was a happy circumstance, actually, that those, one of the properties came on the market, and they kind of felt like dominos. And we feel like that we probably got a better deal, because we had to acquire every bit of those. Because once you took a lane width out of those driveways, the houses were inaccessible. So, that's the reason the whole properties were purchased. And having some money available as this marches on is pretty handy to be able to reach out and touch in case we have another one of those kind of situations.
Further questions?
Part of this project includes a center turn lane, pretty much the whole length of this, two miles. Is that correct?
So, there are different sections of lanes, and they're, and they're fifteen and sixty percent. I, what I believe I remember was like four, five, and six lane cross-sections. And it's at a four lane, that would be no center turn lane. At five, it would be a pull-around-to-turn option. Is there one that is only the two in each direction with a center one for a distance? I can't answer that, but I will look that up, and I will get that to you after.
Okay.
Candy, are you aware, so, obviously, we had a big community conversation around the Sixth Street corridor and kind of, you know, Sixth Street and then around it. And we provided it to ODOT and gave them that document. Are you, and you said that they responded back that they were looking at it and incorporating what they could, which makes me a little nervous. Do you, could you, do you know, when would ODOT expect to come back to the community to share the plans of where, kind of what they've, except, what's their public involvement process moving forward?
So, in all transparency, I am ramping up on this project. I about a week ago sent Emily Person, or Person, a request to know, when we did this corridor study, we came out with some recommendations. I was asking her, because she happens to also be ramping up, she's also new with ODOT, what did, what did get incorporated from those recommendations? And asked her what correspondence we sent them to tell them what we were asking for, so that I have some of that. It's not, I may be asking I T for access to Mr. Karnes' email, so I have some of that. But if she can't provide it to me, then I'll be just researching to find out what we asked for. I don't have the specific knowledge of that right now, but I do have her looking.
No, I understand. I just, I feel like we started a conversation in the community around Sixth Street, and some of those sound really big, and maybe not quite what we were thinking or hoping for. So, it would be great to revisit this and just, or at least to, I know so much of this construction is really not in our purview as the city, since it's a, a state road. But it would be great for the community to understand what that design is looking like. So, as we start talking with landowners and just start preparing as a community for that construction, that we understand what it is that's coming through the center of our town.
Yeah. Just to piggyback there, I mean, it would be great if we can ask them at this point even to say, when do you start sharing these plans publicly? When can we, we would expect to be able to have some feedback, and, and that they would listen to that feedback. I mean, again, state highway, we don't have a whole lot of control over it. We understand that. But it is just a tremendous part of this community. And, and we will want to get as much, you know, information and have some opportunity for feedback as quickly as we can.
I think an option here, and I don't know which of my team will wanna hit me on the head for this, but if we have questions for them that we haven't gotten answers to, we can hold off on signing this agreement, and we can let them respond first till we do find some of that material. And if we need to have some of that incorporated into the agreement, we can ask for that. Their answer may not be anything we like. It's a state agency, and they're spending twenty-five million, and I think we're supposed to be, and we are. We are thankful for that. But we can take the route where we take a break, take a little bit of a space, and ask them for that information before we decide to sign it. And I could come back for the signature after we've had some time to look at that. Or we could believe that, once we sign it, they will listen to what we've sent them in the past, or what we send now. And I, I think this agreement is usually signed much earlier than we're signing it right now. I don't know if it was overlooked or just missed, but I'm pretty sure this agreement is usually signed by now on this, on a similar project.
Can you, or maybe Ms. Carnley would be the one to say this, but what exactly is the agreement obligate us to do at this point? I mean, is it like, we're agreeing that you can come through and build whatever you want in our community? I mean, is there any, like, I don't, I'm not sure what it would entail in the first place, because again, it's a state highway. They get kind of to do what they want at some level. So, what are we signing away here?
Yeah. So, the, excuse me, the agreement just accepts that we agree to participate with ODOT, and they've named the job piece, and they've committed to construction in the amount of twenty-five million. And it reflects zero percent commitment by the city as far as construction funding, but does set forth what our responsibilities would be, which there is a cost associated with, as Candy has explained. There is, you know, there's broad of the under here that, you know, we're only bound to the extent that, you know, we have the funds appropriated on, subject to law, under our appropriations for each fiscal year. There's also broad ability for us to terminate this by agreement of the parties, whether that's that we can't meet our obligations, or that they would terminate because we don't meet our obligations. But I do think Candy makes a good point, that if, at this point in time, we have significant questions about where we're at in the project, that we could take a pause and ask for that information. It certainly, it, I don't know any other timing mechanism, other than that in order for them to proceed past where they're at at the point, they do need these, this agreement and a resolution that we agree to participate for our obligations.
I do think they canceled a sixty percent review meeting because of this. That's only speculation, but we had one scheduled. There was quite a few people in it, on the list, and then it was canceled. And this, it may be to get this out of the way, and then kind of restart. So, we could reach out, ask some more questions, and get those answers before we do it. I, I don't, I think whatever recommendations were sent to them, what I understand is Brady Moore in the room? Is he here today? No. He, he said it was a pretty small set of things that were sent to them on the Sixth Avenue itself. And I don't, I don't have a list. So, I, I will certainly get that before we move forward, if that's the request.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think we're, you know, there's nothing in here that says you agree that, you know, this is final, and we know exactly what it's gonna look like, and we're gonna, you know, so I, I don't... like, and we're going, you know, so I, I don't, I mean, I think there's, certainly this is a time to, to, to talk to them, um, you know, especially with you kind of running the project from here on out, and making sure that we're all on the same page, to say, "Listen, we, we expect to see some, some drawings here, and we expect to have some community participation. We have committed to our community, that this is going to be part of a community conversation, that we're not just kind of handing it off to ODOT and just letting them do what they want." Um, so, I, I think just having that conversation and getting some understanding about how that's going to happen and, and what we can expect from, from ODOT in terms of, um, community participation from this point forward would, would be helpful, for sure.
Well, we know, I mean, even ODOT had an online process for community feedback for this, it'd just be, even if it's just understanding what their follow-up to that type of participation is as they move through their plan process, that, that would be helpful, and then the fact that we did spend money and effort and committed to a conversation with the community, be great to kind of just button, button that conversation up, to understand where we're at and make sure if there's things that they're not accomplishing that maybe we need to look at.
They're at sixty percent, and when you get to sixty percent, you don't do a lot of looking back, so if we want them to look back...
Do it now.
We might think about whether we sign or not.
That sounds like a good idea.
Pardon me?
That sounds like a good idea.
Yeah. Okay, then if we're pausing on that, I don't have any recommendations.
So, the, the plan is for you to go back, talk to ODOT about these questions that we're asking, tell them we'd like to, to wait to commit on this agreement until we have some more information from them on, on the process.
That'd be fine, they'll be perfectly understanding of that. That won't be, not be a problem.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to the next item, item eight C, Public Safety two thousand twenty-two update from Don Jones.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Uh, we want to share with you and our community some highlights from two thousand twenty-two of the phenomenal service our public safety professionals provided our patrons. We did this last year, it's kind of just an overall review of some, some numbers and some statistics. Please know this information doesn't include the many above and beyond efforts such as community service, shop with a cop, cops and bobbers and other events, or planning and protection with events such as holiday parade, Oklahoma State University Homecoming Parade, and the walk-around, Martin Luther King Junior March, and the list goes on and on. Additionally, the devout partnership and dedication to help multiple organizations throughout our great city, such as our work that we do with OSU, Stillwater Public Schools, Stillwater Medical Center, Payne County Health Department, Visit Stillwater, Stillwater Chamber of Commerce, and more. We, we all collaborate together and help in ways with severe weather crises, mitigating safety efforts with large events, disaster, and emergency preparedness, and more. This is a glimpse into the calls our public safety entities swiftly answered and service for our community for two thousand twenty-two. For emergency management, the capital projects for two thousand twenty-two has been storm sirens, new radio system, emergency phone system, and nine-one-one recorder for dispatch. The Director for Stillwater Emergency Management, as you all know, is Rob Hill, and the Deputy Director is Brendan Pope. There are total four employees that do all of the work that they do in emergency management with approximately eighteen volunteers. In two thousand twenty-two, the weather events with deployment, there were twenty-three that included flooding, snow, ice, extreme cold, storm siren activation, and large fires. Community health emergency responses, they addressed warming stations, cooling stations, unfortunately, the meningitis cases, COVID-nineteen, and recently, a large power outage at Stillwater Medical Center. Additionally, they assisted other agencies and organization with events. They assisted Stillwater Police with armed robbery, addressing those, the shootings, missing persons, and swatting calls. They helped SOT with fifteen calls total of support. Examples include barricaded subject and search warrants. They also assisted fire with large grass fires and complex facility fires, Oklahoma State University with drone detection at all home games, all of the home football games, Oklahoma Highway Patrol with the NDUI checkpoints, there were two of those, and nearby counties as needed with fires and law enforcement efforts. Throughout two thousand twenty-two, emergency management also helped with large-scale crisis and emergency preparedness trainings, there were more than fifteen of those. Those examples include SOT, fire staging, Stillwater Regional Airport, FEMA, Stillwater Public Schools, Homeland Security, FBI, law enforcement, driver training, and oil-filled pipeline eruption and natural disasters. Uh, organization of safety efforts for events, they helped with more than fifteen of those as well. Examples include Boomer Blast, the Flying Aggies, Mid-South, Special Olympics, SWAT Week, Juneteenth, National Night Out, OSU Homecoming Walk-Around and Parade, Holiday Parade, Pride Parade, SMC Trick-or-Treat, and MLK Junior Parade. Uh, our, our Emergency Management Director, Rob Hill, uh, serves on federal, state, and city committees, at least nine of those. They do great work in emergency management. For two thousand twenty-two, Stillwater Police Department, that is under the direction of Chief Jeff Watts and Assistant Chief Shannon Jordan. Total employees, they have a hundred and twenty-nine, sworn officers eighty-one, civilian employees forty-eight. In, and to address the training, in-house training, CLEET, which we are now CLEET-certified, which is pretty phenomenal, uh, there are twenty-seven total weeks of training that our officers receive with additional field training of fifteen weeks. So, in two thousand twenty-two, they responded to thirty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty calls, which is quite impressive. Total nine-one-one calls received nineteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine. Total nine-one-one calls transferred to other agencies, three thousand and fifteen. Text to nine-one-one calls, eighty.
Don, I'd like to stop you there.
Yes, sir.
My biggest surprise in the packet is the fact that you can text nine-one-one.
Yes, sir.
I didn't know that. I'm guessing most citizens don't know that, because we only had eighty of those. So, I, I view this as an opportunity for people who can't talk on the phone, who don't like to talk on the phone, or maybe are in a situation where they need to contact nine-one-one but don't want anybody around them to know they're contacting nine-one-one. How does it work? Do you simply just send a text to nine-one-one, or is there a five-digit code you have to send to? How does that work?
I'm going to ask Director Rob Hill to join me and answer that question.
Excellent.
So, to answer your question, what happens is you text your message to nine-one-one, it goes to, um, our nine-one-one system, whereas interpret or receive goes to the computer, and it pops up in a message box on their CAD screen, and then they can interact using the keyboard to interact with the caller. So, they can text to speech, the dispatcher can, or they can actually physically touch the keyboard and text questions back and forth, just as you would on your phone, and have a complete conversation. They receive information, they can provide further instructions, they can let them know that, um, you know, help is on the way, what type of help, who to look for, and where to look for.
How do we promote that?
That is a good question. I don't, I don't have the answer for that.
Okay.
We've had that capability for probably a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was news to me. Is thi, is this a local feature? Is this a state feature? Is this a national feature?
I'm going to also add Chief Jeff Watts to this conversation.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Uh, we promoted this really heavy when it first came out internally and externally. The reason that we're not seeing that feature used extensively is because when someone has an emergency, they want on the phone right now. Uh, texting to nine-one-one is a great option for hearing impaired, or, as you commented, maybe somebody can't get on the phone and talk, they're trying to be silent, don't want other, other people to know that they've called nine-one-one, but when it's an emergency, that's why they called nine-one-one, they want a voice on the phone, and when the dispatcher's trying to obtain a significant amount of information, hey, can you give me a description? Which way did they go? Do they have a gun? What were they wearing? What are their, you know, that's very time-consuming by text.
Sure.
Even, even our younger generation who can text really fast, it's much more expedient to just dial nine-one-one, say, "I need help," and be able to answer those questions and get real-time feedback. It also allows our dispatchers to get information much faster, so that they can decide what resources need to be responding, and also what dangers may be encountered by the resources that are responding.
Do you know the nature of these eighty calls, how they break down? Are they domestic issues?
Most of those are going to be, uh, like, a lot of the alarm calls we get can now come in on, on text. A lot of those, the eighty, are going to be simply people testing to see if it works. Uh, we don't receive very many actual nine-one-one text calls, most people call.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
In two thousand twenty-two, non-emergency calls answered were seventy-eight thousand three hundred. Approximately nineteen thousand outgoing calls, total arrests made, one thousand six hundred and twelve, and I, um, really truly appreciate this added statistic that our police department is including. Mental health-related calls responded to three hundred and nineteen. That was two thousand twenty-two. Yes, sir.
That was actually going to be my question on this one, was, uh, that actually seems low. Is that just, like, specifically the call was made related to a, a mental health case? Or, because I would expect more of our just general calls would involve a mental health crisis of some kind.
Chief Watts is going to help answer that.
Well, as you know, with the changes in nine-eight-eight and some of the other resources that have come in, it has lowered the number of mental health calls that we're responding to, those are now going to other resources. Last year, we were much higher than that, so we anticipate those numbers are going to continue to decline, uh, so that as more resources come in and respond to those types of calls, we should be less and less involved.
So, but that number is, is calls that are, come in as mental health-related calls?
Yes, those are suicides, attempted suicides, uh, mental health, uh, in-progress calls.
But you, I would assume some of your other emergency calls that come in actually turn out to be mental health-related issues more than, I mean, that maybe aren't showing up in that number.
Yeah, oftentimes, those are recoded back to the original type of call, yeah. With our new software system, we're able to track that much better. As we go along over the next couple of years, we will have a more and more accurate data, but we anticipate seeing those numbers continue to decline because of those other resources where we were responding before, now we're not.
That's good to hear.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, moving on to our Stillwater Animal Welfare. As you may or may not know, they are under the direction of our Stillwater Police Department, since animal welfare is a public safety, uh, it is part of public safety. So, our supervisor is Rachel Wasserman, and she does a phenomenal job. Uh, our captain is Roy Stevens. They have a total, uh, employees in two thousand twenty-two, four full-time and two part-time, with approximately twenty volunteers. Some of the call-outs include, first of all, they responded to almost three thousand calls in two thousand twenty-two. Some of those call-outs included, uh, picked up dogs at large within the community, six hundred and three, picked up deceased animals, two hundred and seventy-seven, welfare cruelty concern checks, three hundred and forty-three, responded to livestock calls, thirty-two, responded to wildlife calls, a hundred and forty-seven. I will tell you that in two thousand twenty-two, they had a total intake, that includes dog, cat, or other, of one thousand six hundred and nine. That is, that is a lot of animals that are going through our Stillwater, uh, Animal Welfare, uh, facility, and we would like to note that we are essentially a no-kill shelter. Of the total intake of that one thousand six hundred and nine, only four percent had to be euthanized, and those were due to medical reasons. So, uh, I will just add in that, um, Rachel Wasserman and her team do a phenomenal job of trying to find homes and placing all, all of our animals that come in there, uh, and she even reaches out to other states to try and find them homes, so they, they go above and beyond. Uh, Stillwater Fire Department is under the direction of Chief Terry Essery and Assistant Chief Brandon Halcom. In two thousand twenty-two, they responded to four thousand one hundred and seventy-eight calls. Some of the call-outs included, uh, emergency medical services, one thousand four hundred and twenty-three, rescue is forty-two, fires, uh, and that includes structure, vehicle, grass, and other, and you can see those numbers there. False alarm is seven hundred and thirty-four, hazardous condition, two hundred and thirty-six, and general and miscellaneous, one thousand five hundred and twelve. Some of that is, the reason is, is that is considered general and miscellaneous, is some of those do include calls for service, but some of that is when they have been called out, and then another entity is responding, and they, they don't need to be called to that, so they were en route and then called back, okay? Um, fire marshals, as you know, in two thousand twenty-two, uh, uh, Steve Sylvester resigned or retired, and Thomas Tharp took the helm, so that's why we have two listed there. Uh, total employees, they have seventy-six, sworn firefighters, seventy-four, civilian employees, two plus five interns, and in two thousand twenty-two, our, uh, firefighters participated in more than eighty-three hundred collective training hours. We greatly appreciate the continued hard work and dedication from all our public safety professionals. We are safer and our community is better because of their efforts. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Don, councilors. I think we jumped in with our questions, so we appreciate y'all being here to, to present that information. It's really great to, to see that. I appreciate that you've started doing that here on an annual basis to kind of give us that overview of, of all of the crazy and essential work that happens, uh, in our public safety.
We have, we definitely have a great public safety leadership within our city.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don. All right. That takes us to item eight D, an announcement from Water Utilities regarding the temporary use of free chlorine from Mr. James, James Driscoll.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, James Driscoll, Water Utilities Director, and I am here tonight to talk about a fleet, free chlorine conversion and system flush, and as we go along, uh, that should be explained well. So, a little bit of background, in order to provide the most effective disinfection process, the Water Utilities Department will make a temporary change in the type of disinfectant used in the drinking water. It is typical for water systems that use chloramines to temporarily change to free chlorine to clean water pipes and provide a reliable disinfectant residual throughout all points of the distribution set, system. So, Stillwater uses chloramines, and so basically, uh, chloramines is ammonia and chlorine combined, uh, will shut off the ammonia feed and run fleet, free chlorine in, in simple terms. Both chlorine and chloramines are common disinfectants used by water systems to kill bacteria in drinking water. Some differences between the two, uh, chlorine is a stronger disinfectant, uh, but it is not as stable in the system, so in large systems, it's hard to maintain that residual to the extents of the system. Chlorines aren't as strong, but they are more stable in the system, so they'll reach further out to the extents of the system. This is kind of a map showing our distribution system in Stillwater. If you look to the north, you'll see the water treatment plant, uh, similar on Turpik, uh, that's to the top right. Uh, as you come down and to the left, uh, we feed all the way out to Coyle Road to the west, and as you go south on Coyle Road, I don't have it marked, but Ninety-second Street, we go a little bit beyond that. Uh, if you count just general miles on this map, uh, I was a little bit surprised, I thought it was around ten to twelve, it actually ended up being close to twenty to twenty-two miles from the treatment plant to that farthest extent, so, uh, a large system. Uh, Water Utility Staff monitors the disinfectant residual and other parameters in the distribution system on a daily basis. This temporary conversion and system flush process is common and utilized as needed to ensure healthy drinking water, uh, is continuously provided to customers. So, uh, a lot of cities, most cities that use chloramines, uh, eventually do this, some do it yearly, some do it every two years, five years, uh, different systems do different things. OSU did one, uh, at the end of their COVID lockdown, uh, they're planning another one in July. Uh, if, if you research, different cities do different timeframes. Our goal is to maintain our system through treatment and flushing, uh, and if we see certain water quality, uh, changes, then we consider tools like this. So, to ensure water quality and continued regulatory compliance, the Water Utilities Department will perform a temporary free chlorine conversion in the distribution system beginning April third, two thousand twenty-three, with a thirty-day duration. The system will resume use of chloramines on May third, two thousand twenty-three. So, again, we will begin on April third and on May third. So, some anticipated issues, uh, taste and odor tend to be the highest. Uh, if you have a sensitive nose or taste, you're likely going to have that little bit of chlorine, or maybe a lot of chlorine taste. Uh, there are some things you can do to... There are some things you can do to eliminate that or limit it. Some other issues we'll have is possibly low water pressure. To make this change over, we'll be doing a lot of system flushing to move water. And so, that water going out is going to lower some pressure in certain areas. Another anticipated issue with all that flushing, we'll have water occasionally on roadways. We'll try to limit that. And anywhere where we feel like it's a safety hazard, we'll take steps to make sure that that's safe. So, financial impacts. Again, there's going to be a lot of overtime from the system flushing. We literally will have some employees working around the clock for that change over to get, when we shut the ammonia off, to flush the free chlorine through as swiftly as possible. We'll continue to flush the system during that 30 days to move stuff. We'll be testing daily, make sure everything is safe. And then, when we switch back to chloramines, we'll do that system flush through again with employees working around the clock. So, there's no actions required tonight. This is a public service announcement. We will start our notification process tomorrow, beginning with some of our bulk customers. Customers, all customers should be seeing this on their utility bills coming up. I believe there's been some postings on our webpage about now with more information as well. We'll be posting in the news press a couple of times. We'll try to spread this word as, as broad as we can. And with that, I'll try to answer questions. I also brought Jason Tyler, our plants manager. If I can't answer something, may ask him up.
Thank you, James. Councillors, any questions?
I, I appreciate the communications that you have planned. I think that would be, and that probably happens anytime you do this. What is our typical, how often do we do this?
So, the last time we performed something like this was about seven years ago.
Okay.
And again, our goal is to not, for Stillwater. Other, other cities choose otherwise. We try to maintain it other ways as best we can. You know, we always want to continue to make our water better. I think David Barth is going to be speaking later this evening about some water quality changes, recommendations that a private consultant has provided us.
So, you said, well, I go some do it yearly, every other year, five years. Going seven years, does that mean we're doing a good job of managing our system and didn't have to do this?
Yes.
That's what you would think, right?
My opinion is yes, you know, and, and a lot of that's flushing. And honestly, you know, everything gets blamed on COVID, so that's not my point here. But COVID reduced staff numbers. And when you have reduced staff, maintenance suffers. And so, you know, the emergencies get the employees. And so, you know, some of our flushing slowed post-COVID until we staffed back up. City management has granted us some additional employees just for flushing. So, we'll have a dedicated flushing crew going forward to aid us in maintaining any gains from this.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Mayor, if I may for a moment. One thing I want to point out, we're, we are, ODEQ is not on us. We have not had any violations. The last time we did this, there were suggestions that we were trying to hide something. So, and our effort this time is to make this big, broad announcement and have a lot of frequently asked questions on our website. And as James said, that should be up at the end of this meeting. And we're glad to answer any questions. So, it's a routine matter that we're not being forced to do. It is staff's opinion that it's time to do it, and before we are forced to do it. So, we've tried to take as many steps as possible to take away some of the conspiracy theories about why we're doing it.
I think the last time we had this conversation, I learned a whole lot about the water treatment process and how complicated it is and how issues like how long the water's sitting in the system, how much of it's being used, and how much, how quickly it's being flushed through. I mean, all of this has lots of factors. And so, I think it is great that we're getting out ahead of this, giving people, what, almost two months notice to say, hey, you're going to probably notice a chlorine smell, chlorine taste maybe in something, in the water for this time period. It is entirely, you know, due to our diligence in maintaining clean water system here. I, I mean, you know, not that that will solve or answer everyone's questions, but I do appreciate, the, the last time this happened actually was initially due to a, a, a equipment issue with the plant, right? So, we didn't necessarily have the time to notify people it was going to happen.
That's correct. My understanding is they had an issue with the chlor, the ammonia feed at the plant. And so, it was an emergency switch over out of necessity. It was not planned. It actually, you know, I, I wasn't here at that point. I was here, but not in this position. But staff has told me that, you know, they saw measurable gains in water quality even from that non-planned event. So, ironically, we're going to take advantage of having the ammonia down to make some repairs. We're going to, we feel like we have some contaminants in our tank, I see contaminant, water. And so, we're going to pull that tank down to free up any space for future. So, we're going to take advantage of the plant to make some adjustments during this time as well. You know, one thing about our timing, one, we wanted to get out in front and make everybody aware of what's going on. But also, as summer comes on, as the water temperature heats, anytime you have warm water, it promotes growth. It's harder to keep residuals in the system. So, you know, our, our timing is strategic as well, catching that. Still, we have some cool water to work with, but yet we get past the freezing weather. So, when that water's on the street, we don't cause issues.
So, what are you measuring that's led you to the conclusion this is the time to do this?
So, typically, so we, we have to maintain a certain residual of chloramines or free chlor, or chlorine in the system. So, we test that daily and throughout the system. And so, when it starts getting harder to keep that residual up or bring it back up with flushing is what we're kind of watching. It's an indication that we need to do something. There are other measurements that, that we take that support what our theories are. But the main one that we kind of watch is, what's the struggle we're having? Or, you know, how much effort is it taking to maintain those, the system?
Well, we appreciate, again, the, the heads up here and, and the discussion. And, and I know for anybody out there who's interested in our water treatment system, there are folks here who would be happy to discuss that and answer questions. It is a incredibly complicated and, and a system that a, a lot of very smart folks work on every day to make sure that we continue to provide clean drinking water to not just our community, but 25,000 or 30,000 people outside of Stillwater too that use our, that use our water. So, it's a, you know, something that, you know, we talked about this before. We all use the water in Stillwater. All the folks who work at the plant use the water in Stillwater. We're all working together to make sure that we have access to this. And I think a, a good track record, an excellent track record of providing service to our community. So, thank you for, for letting us know, and, and we'll look forward to getting through the, the process.
Thank you.
Thanks, James. Okay, item, let's see, resolutions. Do we need to skip the resolution?
We can skip 9A, we'll bring it back on the future agenda.
Excellent. That, that goes back to our discussion of the Sixth Street project. And so, we'll look at that resolution once we've got some more information from ODOT. Item 10 is appointments to the Audit Committee. We have two folks on the Audit Committee whose terms have reached the end. They've both indicated that they'd be willing to continue to serve, which we very much appreciate. The Audit Committee is a very important part of our financial processes here at the city. They do a great job. We get, we get clean audits, and I appreciate all the work that they do. So, I am going to move that we reappoint Kelly Cox and Randy Murray to additional terms on the Audit Committee. Second. With a motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, Kelly Cox and Randy Murray are reappointed to the Audit Committee. Thank you to both of them for their continued service in, again, that essential role. That takes us to reports from the officers and the boards. City Attorney Garnley.
Yes, request for an executive session pursuant to 25OS, section 3 of 7B1 of the Open Meeting Act for the Purpose of Confidential Communication Regarding Employment, Appointment, Promotion, Demotion, Disciplining, or Resignation of Stillwater City Manager Norman McNichol.
Thank you. Mr. McNichol.
Thank you, Mayor. Election Day is Tuesday, February 14th, with polls open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. You will need to go to your normal polling location unless you take advantage of early voting, which is also an option, on February 9th and 10th, from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM at the Payne County Election Board. Included on the ballot will be city councillor for Stillwater, Stillwater Public Schools bond election, and the Payne County 3.8 cents sales tax issue. We encourage every registered voter to learn more about these propositions that affect infrastructure and quality of life within Payne County, and vote in the direction they believe is best. For more information about your polling location and for sample ballots, go online to votepaynecounty.com or www.elections-ok.gov.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor.
The city's annual household hazardous waste collection event will be Saturday, April 22nd, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Convenience Collection Center located at 807 Perkins Road. Good incentive to get into your garage and start cleaning out now. We want to inform our residents about this event now, so they have plenty of time to prepare. Virtually any household pollutant will be collected. Bring oil-based paints, pesticides, herbicides, household cleaning projects, mixed fuels, fertilizer, pool chemicals, craft and hobby supplies, rechargeable batteries, et cetera. They will also be collecting unwanted pharmaceuticals again at this event, although those can be dropped off year-round at the Stillwater Police Department. I didn't know that. So, you can just bring them into the police department? Okay. Didn't know that. For more information, please contact the Watershed Quality Specialist, Chris Franks, at 405-533-8482, or the Convenience Collection Center at 405-742-8269.
Thank you. That's in April, right?
April 22nd.
Okay. Plan, plan now?
Plan now.
Counselor Hawkins?
It's that time of year, tax filing season, and the Stillwater Library is offering assistance. Community members can schedule appointments for free tax preparation assistance from the American Association of Retired Persons, AARP, by visiting library.stillwater.org/taxes.php, calling the library's help desk at 405-372-3633, extension 8106, or stopping by the library in person during regular hours. There are a limited number of appointments available, so anyone with the ability to prepare their taxes by alternative methods should consider doing so to ensure enough appointments for those in the community who rely on this service the most. It's a great service.
Absolutely. Counselor Clark?
I got the short one. City offices will be closed on Monday, February 20th for President's Day. Trash and recycling will still be collected, but not yard waste. Set your cards out by 6:00 AM because collection routes may vary.
All right. And I will let you know that if you're looking for an environmentally friendly way to save money on your water bill, you may want to purchase a rain barrel through the city of Stillwater. These barrels capture water from your roof and store it for future use. Using rain barrels also helps reduce stormwater pollution by minimizing the amount of stormwater runoff that leaves the site. Mail-in order forms are due by April 27th, and online orders are due by April 30th. For more information, you can visit stillwater.org or email zach.henson, Z-A-C-K dot Henson, H-E-N-S-O-N, at stillwater.org. You can also call 405-533-8436. All right. At this time, I will move that we recess the city council meeting before item 13. Second. With a motion and a second to recess city council, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, we'll recess city council at this time. And I will call to order the February 6, 2023 meeting of the Stillwater Economic Development Authority. On the consent docket, we have regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve consent docket.
Second.
With a motion and a second, please vote. The vote of four to zero, the consent docket is approved. Item 5 is general orders, which is our Visit Stillwater Semi-Annual Report, presented by Mr. Chris Norris. In what I hear is potentially his final appearance before us as chair of the, but I don't, I think.
See, I was going to, if I get choked up through this, you know, it's so much fun.
I mean, you could always be reappointed.
I don't think I can.
Really? I think he's terming out for a while.
I'm termed out.
Okay.
And they do not want to change the rules.
But you have done a great job in this role.
Well, thanks. I appreciate that. Obviously, I'm Chris Norris, Chairman of the Visit Stillwater Board of Directors. This report's going to include, it's a greatly expanded deliverables template we've outlined with our newly-developed professional service contract. We continue to focus on efforts on marketing to visitors and communicating with residents to support our local businesses as increase sales tax revenue. Under the marketing and communications, we are trending to hit or exceed our annual goals. The last two quarters of this fiscal year usually are most active. So, we think we will exceed our goal. About 45,000 copies of the 2023 Visitors' Guide to the Local Scene have been distributed, and all 100,000 will be distributed by December. Our website traffic continues to grow. Our events pages are most actively visited. The Online Game Day Guide was very popular, and the Holidays 2020 Landing Page saw quite a bit of traffic. We continue to feature locally-held events and unique to Stillwater retailers and restaurants in our monthly promotional videos. Our map containing Stillwater, the OSU campus, and Payne County continue to be popular. We're on track to update it and print it again in June. We printed 12,500 last year. Our monthly e-newsletter and still-in-the-no-post cards are distributed to increase event attendance and ensure our restaurants and retail partners have staff scheduled to accommodate the crowds as they ebb and flow into town. We produce three rack cards to date, featuring OSU Athletics, Park and Ride Program, Fly SWO, Holidays 2022, the Savings Pass, and the Stillwater GO Tour. Cards are distributed to all Stillwater Hotels, Airport Information Stands, the 24/7 Visitors' Guide at Visit Stillwater, Stillwater and Perkins On Cues, and Perry Guthrie &amp; Cushing Hotels and Chamber. We maintain our visitor information stands at the Stillwater Regional Airport with the inbound and outbound terminals, and recently partnered with the airport to provide free coffee bar for outbound passengers. Fly SWO is consistently messaged within our marketing efforts. We've already promoted close to 800 events and will reach over 2,000 by the end of the summer. We've assisted local event planners by ensuring their events are included on the Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department website calendar of events. The sales and service teams are working closely with meeting and event planners daily along with our local hospitality industry partners. We further customize data entry and reports to better document much of what we do for our clients and local business partners. So far this year, we have provided around 15,000 in grants. That equates to an estimated 8,700 day visitors, 3,400 overnight visitors, and an estimate, an estimate of $1,136,000 spent by visitors. Over the first six months, we provided assistance for at least 675 events that equated conservatively to $1,51,000 in services provided. The value of services includes an estimate of the cost of the Stillwater Guide to the local scene, the visitor bags, volunteer assistance securing local media exposure, and wide range of marketing. As you're aware, our contract is for $975,000, and services we've tracked for clients and local business partners are already over a million for the first six months of the fiscal year. It's hard to believe, but about a year to the day, the citizens of Stillwater voted by a 70-30 mandate to increase the visitors' tax from the original 4% from 1985 to 7% beginning July 1st of 2022. As of right now, within seven months, our visitors' tax As of right now, within seven months, our visitors' tax collections are eighty-one percent ahead of the same time last year. As you are aware, thirty percent goes to, uh, a tourism committee that's used to present to the city the development and maintenance of visitor development amenities, and we're already at two hundred and ninety-one thousand after seven months. Two of those seven months were collected at the four percent because of a lagging in the, the, the months and the way they were, uh, when, when they're collected. We estimated four hundred thousand for the first year, and I think we will hit that. We currently have eighteen hotel properties and fourteen hundred and six rooms. Baymont by Wyndham is expected to open soon with additional one hundred and forty rooms. We continue to provide support and data for the conference center development, which will include a courtyard by Marriott and a hundred and twenty-five rooms. Another, uh, pretty neat thing that y'all have helped us with is the short-term rentals have ranged from a low of a hundred and thirty-two to a high of two hundred and sixteen during the first half of the fiscal year, and they doubled from December twenty-one to December twenty-two. And where y'all came in was that you allowed, uh, the tax to be collected on the Airbnb, and now, beginning January first of twenty twenty-three, VRBO and Expedia also are remitting that tax, so now everyone's on the same playing field. I know I went through a lot of info, a lot of numbers. Any questions that y'all have?
Trustees?
I just want to observe that there's a lot of data in this, which means somebody's doing a lot of data tracking and keeping track of things and posting things, and, uh, this, there's a lot of work represented in this twenty-two page.
Staff's done a heck of a job on that, and we've got some things in the works right now that we think will give us absolute exact detail. Uh, we're close anyway, but I think we can get to the number, uh, exactly by, by tracking some things, and we're a couple of months from that being finalized. Anything else?
Yeah, I mean, I was just gonna reiterate that same point. I mean, we certainly appreciate with, um, you know, we've gone through a couple of iterations of contracting the last few years and, and definitely sort of dialed in, kind of making sure that everybody's on the same page. I think, I think that's, um, going well, and certainly pleased with, with the reporting we're getting and, and, um, uh, very clearly, uh, you know, return on that, on investment we make.
Yeah, I think we're all on the same page, and you'll be relieved to know the feigning goats are coming back pretty quick. I think we're a couple of weeks out from it, and, uh...
We'll invite you back for a special report on the feigning goats.
On that, yeah. I know John Wedleak always liked that, so maybe we could do a, a report together. So, anything else?
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, guys. Thanks so much for your help.
Thanks to the team at Visit Stillwater as well.
Enjoy your next retirement.
Any reports from the officers of the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
With a motion and a second to adjourn CETA, please vote. Vote of four to zero, Stillwater Economic Development Authority is now adjourned. This time, I will call to order the February sixth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Stillwater Utilities Authority. Item two on the consent docket, eh, item two, it, on the agenda is the consent docket. Is there action?
Move to approve the consent docket.
Second.
Motion and a second, please vote. Vote of four to zero, the consent docket's approved. Item five is general orders. Mr. Barth is here to help us consider approval of professional services agreement with Black and Beach for design around the water treatment plant.
Yes, good evening, trustees. David Barth with the Engineering Department, um, here tonight to talk about the next step at the water treatment plant, uh, with the improvements that we're making. Uh, this, uh, slide here on the cover shows an aerial view of our water treatment plant looking to the west. Some of the items that are in this shot, we'll be touching with this project. This, uh, long white cylinder over here next to the red pickup is the, uh, carbon dioxide storage tank, and that will be replaced, and the improvements to the CO2 injection system. Also, over here by this, uh, there's a green building back here on the upper right-hand corner. You probably can't see my cursor. Anyway, inside that green building is our own ozone system. We'll be making improvements, uh, to the ozone system with this project as well. But I wanted to get to our slide that I showed last August, just to kind of give you an update. Um, this is that phased improvement plan that we shared with you. Um, the, uh, the green projects, so the recovered water pump station, the finished water pump station, uh, and the lagoon improvements, those projects are in final design right now, and we're scheduled to start construction on those, uh, towards the end of the summer. Uh, the cathodic protection, uh, of the Cal Pipeline from the plant, well, actually from OSU's plant up to our plant is finished water, and then, um, from our plant up to Cal Lake, that project, uh, the contractor's been selected, and they're finalizing their submittals, and then they'll begin to construction soon. The, uh, the red there is the, uh, additional raw water storage, which two weeks ago you all authorized us to get started with Corolla Engineers on that, and we held a kickoff meeting with them last Friday. Uh, we've started reaching out to the city of Perry, to the Friends of Lake McMurtry. Uh, Bill Millis talked to the, um, Conservation District today about the dam, so we're already getting, uh, getting our legs under us on that project. Very excited about that. Uh, and so tonight, I'm here to talk to you about what you see in yellow. Um, and that's a, a chemicals project that involves a new lime system. Um, it upgrades our chlorine system, uh, and adds a new ammonia system in, in a chemical building that's up to the north there, uh, as well as we'll have some other chemicals in there, um, sodium hydroxide, sodium hexamethylphosphate. We're going to, like I said, up, update our, or improve our ozone system and redo our carbon dioxide system. And all of this is with the intent that we would be able to, um, be able, be able to accommodate future demand, um, over the next fifty years. So we'll be, um, doing this in a way that's either planned to handle twenty-four million gallons per day or easily upgradable. Um, we'll have the space and, uh, and everything there ready to go. So like I, this is the scope of work I just mentioned. So a brand-new lime, uh, system. We selected Black and Beach back in twenty seventeen to look at several things at our plant, and so, um, one of those was the initially, uh, was to look at the lime feed system, and, uh, the lime feed system that we have is at the end of its useful life. Um, we're actually gonna do a temporary project here very soon to, uh, um, you know, continue, make sure the lime feed continues to work well until we get this project, uh, constructed. Um, we'll be making improvements to the ozone, chlorine, carbon dioxide systems, um, in that new chemical building. Uh, the design is scheduled to take about fourteen months. Um, we actually are hoping that we will build the, the lime feed system, um, sooner than, than the other parts. Um, one, because we're gonna use the, um, the EPA, or the Congressional Directive, uh, five million dollars that we received, uh, through Senator Inhofe's office, um, that's being administered through the EPA. We're going to use that for the lime project, and then the rest of it, um, the funding right now is unknown. Uh, this next slide shows our strategic plan alignment and, uh, the funding again. Um, the funding for this, uh, design and, uh, evaluation and, and bidding and construction phase, uh, services will be funded with the, um, ARPA money that we received from the federal government. We received about eight million dollars over the last sixteen months in two payments, and we'll be using, um, those funds to fund this, this, uh, effort with Black and Beach. With that, do you have any questions before I make a recommendation?
Trustees?
Do I understand correctly that this is the, um, this does not include the construction?
That is correct.
Okay. And do we have, um, estimates of, at least for the lime feed system, what that will cost?
We don't have a, a, an estimate from them yet. I'm guessing it'll be in the, um, six to seven million dollar range, but I don't know anything beyond that. Um, so probably a little bit more than the five million dollars that we are getting, um, from the Congressional Directive.
Thank you.
Yes.
What's your recommendation?
Uh, recommend a motion to approve the professional services agreement with Black and Beach for preliminary and final design, bidding, and construction phase services for a new lime system and chemical feed building at the water treatment plant. Authorize the general manager to sign the agreement and approve the budget amendments appropriating, or, excuse me, a budget amendment appropriating, um, four million, six hundred ninety-five thousand for the project, which includes the agreement amount of four million, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight, and a contingency.
Thank you, David. Trustees?
Motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
A motion and a second to accept the recommendation, please vote. It's approved with a vote of four to zero. That takes us to item five B, which is consider approval of a professional services agreement with Plumber and Associates for design services related to the Sixth Avenue project.
Yes, good evening again. Um, so this is, earlier you heard Candy talk, uh, a lot about the Sixth Avenue widening project that ODOT is planning for our community, and so as part of that, we have to relocate utilities. And, um, as, as she's mentioned, we've already engaged a consultant on the west half of the project, and that's because we already had that consultant engaged, uh, doing some water and sewer, uh, work for the College Gardens area, and that College Gardens area ties right into the western half of the Sixth Avenue project. So tonight, I'm here requesting that we engage with Plumber Associates for the east half of the project, which is basically what you see in this photo, is starting at, uh, near Washington and going all the way, uh, east to the, uh, Stillwater Mill and Agri Center. Uh, the scope of work is, uh, they will identify locations where the existing water distribution and sewer collection systems conflict with ODOT's plan for widening Sixth Avenue. Uh, they'll make recommendations and provide design bidding and construction phase services for relocating any conflicting water and sewer infrastructure. And then we've also, uh, got included in this project, uh, some support for our operations group. You heard, um, James Driscoll earlier this evening talk about how during, um, COVID that they had a lot of turnover, and so, um, they've got several projects that we're able to help with, uh, with this project. So installation and replacement of valves, abandonment of some infrastructure, uh, that we're not using any longer, and some sewer point repairs in other parts of the city. Uh, evaluation and design will take approximately twelve months, and, um, you know, I, I just want to say, um, I know you, you put a hold on the, or you took a pause on the ODOT agreement. This project, uh, with Plumber, um, we're gonna have to relocate utilities no matter what, and, um, we're, we're not gonna ask Plumber to look at anything that hasn't been, that we haven't decided on as a community, that this is what we're going forward with. So we, we will ask Plumber to go ahead and start work on what they can, um, but we're gonna need to have these utilities relocated before, um, ODOT, uh, lets their project for bid. Uh, I will also, um, say that I know you, you do have a voice here, and, um, some of you may not remember, or maybe you weren't here, but I remember about almost twenty years ago, uh, the city, or ODOT was widening, um, and redoing Highway fifty-one west of town, and if you remember, the eastbound lanes were much lower than the, the westbound lanes, and there was an old bridge that crossed the creek, and so when they redid that, the design that they came to the city with, I believe, was one solid pavement section, so concrete all the way across between Sanger and Country Club, and if you go out there, you, the grass medians are still there. So I'm pretty sure that Dan Blankenship, who was the Development Services Director at the time, came to the council and asked for their blessing to, to contact ODOT, to ask them to keep those grass medians instead of the, um, the pavement section that they were moving forward with, which was, you know, essentially five or six lanes, um, all the way across. So, um, anyway, a piece of history there. Um, I do think it's worth, uh, taking a look at that and making sure that, uh, that we get what we, uh, want, and we are, you know, it's great that they're paying for it, um, but we have to live here. So, um, this is the tri- sorry, I digressed a little bit. The stra- strategic plan alignment, uh, is on this, uh, slide as well as funding, so the funding for these services will come from the water and sewer funds, because we're both, uh, touching the water and sewer systems in the city. And with that, I would entertain any questions before I make a recommendation.
Thank you, David. Trustees, any questions?
So I understand, I wish that last week when we were talking about the other one, that we knew kind of more about where we were with, um, ODOT's plans. I, we didn't have maybe the context to ask those, these same questions, but I understand that we have to remove utilities either way. Would there be, and that we probably aren't going to measurably change what ODOT has in their sixty percent plans, but is there, is there any concern that we would, like, start something that we wouldn't need, or that we would spend dollars that don't need to be spent if we haven't? If we don't have more information from ODOT?
Yeah, I understand your concern. Um, we'll definitely, I'll, I'll, I'll definitely work to protect against that. Um, you know, there's certain things that we can't, like the sewer lines, the sewer flows from north to south. It's gonna cross the highway, so we're still gonna be crossing the highway. We may just have to lower, um, or change directions in some places, um, but we're gonna have to make some changes. Water lines that run parallel to the highway, um, they may have to move slightly, you know, north or south, depending on where they're located, or they may have to move a block over like Candy mentioned. Um, so, but until we know for sure what the, uh, the pavement project is, um, it, it doesn't make sense to, to start. I mean, there's some things that they, the consultant can start now, like survey, or, you know, looking at the survey that's already been collected for the project and start, started building up their data, you know, for the project. Um, that stuff has to be done anyway. So I think just engaging with them now, getting them started, and especially on those other maintenance things that we're doing to help support operations, they can do that. It doesn't impact the ODOT project at all.
Is, are these bid as a time and materials contract, or are they bid lump sum?
Which are you talking about?
To, to Plumber, is that, how is it their work? Is it, do you know, is it billed? Like, if we approve this now?
Right.
The scope changes.
It's an hourly rate schedule.
Time and materials not to exceed.
But they have a, yeah, it's a not-to-exceed, um, agreement, and they've given us a fee, ba- basis of their fee that shows this is what we think it's gonna take to do conceptual design, preliminary design, evaluation, and we pretty much hold them to that.
So there would then potentially be an opportunity, as they're working on, like you said, kind of laying out the survey and kind of getting their existing conditions underway, there would be an opportunity to say, okay, now we have some more information? Well, they'd have to, because they're, they're gonna need ODOT's plans at some point.
Yes.
Um, but there would be an opportunity for us to not pause necessarily, but just take a second and make sure that...
Yeah, our agreement's pretty clear that, I mean, they, they, they move on things when we tell them that they can move, and so we give them a nose to proceed, and they can work on some things. Then, well, they'll give us deliverables, and then they really can't move forward until we've given them the blessing and said, you can move forward to the next phase of the project, so...
So it gives us a little time for us to get our, our bearings with ODOT?
That is correct.
Okay.
And, and yeah, we're gonna have to, to make sure that, that, um, and, and Plumber worked with us on Perkins Road, so they're familiar with ODOT, um, and, and working with ODOT to relocate utilities, so...
And I would, I would assume there's some conversation, maybe some give and take with, you know, if they say, well, under this design, if ODOT says this is how we're gonna do it, and they go, well, then we'd have to move utilities all the way to Seventh Street, or we'd have to, I mean, I, is there discussion that kind of goes back and forth while these things are being designed to say, well, this is what would have to happen with utilities if you do it that way, but if you change it a little bit, maybe we could save? I mean, I don't know, is that happening?
Yeah, I, I think there's some of that. I think that one of the other things that's interesting, and I heard a presentation not long ago, um, and I know Candy talked about some about the schedule, the last thing that I saw on this project, um, is that they plan to build it in phases, and they plan to work on maybe the western intersection and maybe one or two other intersections at once, and that's one project. And then maybe working on, um, Sixth Avenue Western to McFarland, or something like that, and, and then maybe, and, and breaking it up in several phases, instead of Perkins Road, where you've got half of it, you know, basically demolished for the whole mile. Um, I don't, that's not their plan here, uh, is to take the whole two and a half miles or two miles or whatever it is, and, and tear out half of it at a time, and, and I think it's gonna be several contractors, not just one, so...
Sure.
Different project.
Further questions?
I do remember when the highway was split like that, that was the worst place to learn how to drive your, uh, manual car, to try to turn left. That hill was a killer.
Yeah.
Anyway. All right, uh, if there's no further questions, what's your recommendation for us?
Sure. Uh, recommend a motion to approve the professional services agreement with Plumber Associates Incorporated for evaluation, design, bidding, and construction phase services for utility relocation along Sixth Avenue, Washington Street, to the Stillwater Mill, and maintenance projects including valve... projects including valve replacements, installations, and abandoned lines. Authorize the general manager to sign the agreement and approve the budget amendment appropriating $768,000 for the project, which includes $585,755 for basic services, $112,133 for additional services, and a contingency.
Trustees?
I move to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. It's approved with a vote of four to zero. Thank you, David. Any reports from the officers of the board?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn SUA, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned. At this time, I will reconvene the Stillwater City Council before item 13 on the agenda. Is there a motion for us to enter an executive session as requested by the city attorney?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. The vote of four to zero, the Stillwater City Council will now enter executive session. We are back. Is there a motion to reconvene in regular session?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reconvene in regular session. Can you call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jaloski?
Yes.
Counselor Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Approved for a vote of four to zero.
Four to zero. We're back in regular session as a Stillwater City Council. There was no recommended action on the executive session, but it is my unfortunate duty to let you all know that Mr. McNichol informed us of his intent to retire from his position on or before June 1st of this year. This is, I say unfortunate because very much have appreciated Mr. McNichol's service as a city manager here in Stillwater and his service of 46-plus years to the city in various capacities. So it is disappointing a little bit to us to say that he will no longer be able to have his service here on the, at the city after his retirement, but we're also very pleased for him and for you, Norman, in the ability to go and live a retired life without the stresses and strains of this position. So it's, you know, not necessarily the choice we would have made for you, but we're happy to, you know, for you to be able to go forward and move on to that next phase.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to serve. I'll miss the people here, but I am looking forward to fulfilling a bucket list and having a little quality time with my wife and all of my family, so.
Well, we'll have, we'll have some time. We appreciate, appreciate the fact that he's, you're willing to stick around for the next couple of months to help kind of get us through the budget process and that sort of thing, and certainly transition. We'll start a search and we'll talk more about that in future meetings in terms of the search to replace Mr. McNichol, but we appreciate your willingness to give us some time to get to that point. So I'm sure there'll be much more to discuss and more to talk about when it comes to your service and the tremendously positive impact you've had over the city of Stillwater for that time. But for now, congratulations on the future of retirement and thank you so much for your service to the city of Stillwater.
Thank you.
All right. If nothing else on the agenda for this evening, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jaloski?
Yes.
Counselor Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
With a vote of four to zero, the city council is now adjourned. And that concludes our meetings for the evening.